June. No problem. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to June's caucus meeting. Just a few announcements to begin with. First of all, congratulations once again to the class of 2025, an incredible graduation, and we wish our Blackhawks all the best as they continue to soar into their future. And speaking of soaring into the future, congratulations as well to our softball team as they continue that quest on the PIAA state championship. As it looks like we travel down to Dubois, Pennsylvania to play at 1 o'clock on Thursday against the Sharon Tigers, if I'm accurate in saying that. So, good luck to our Blackhawks. All right, diving into some personnel matters, into the June board agenda, which is a rather large agenda, as it will be for this time of year. So, taking a look at personnel, we have three resignations, unfortunately. We have Carrie Simpson, Chloe Smith, and Megan Clark, and we appreciate all of their service to the Sesquonita School District and wish them well. Underemployment, we have James Olinger from New Cumberland for the position of Director and Safety and Security, and this will be an Act 93 position. He'll have additional duties as a police officer, pending the completion of Act 67 training and the appropriate court approvals. We also have and excited to welcome Heather Heckert back to Sesquonita School District. Heather is a graduate of Sesquonita, and we're excited to have Heather join us for the 25-26 school year as a math teacher. So, we're excited, high school math teacher. So, welcome back to Sesquonita, Heather. Change in status, we have Jackie Beck, Amy Tincheck, and Karen Gibney moving across the scale based upon the additional credits. So, congratulations on your hard work and the accumulation of those academic accolades. Leave of absence, we have Mrs. Lindsay Krismer for FMLA leave beginning August 12th to November 4th. And two athletic coaches, Dylan Benowitz, Assistant Varsity Assistant Football Coach, and Kylie Paulson cheerleading. And we have some summer camp teachers, Lisa Perkins as the Camp Director for Early Birds. It's our pre-kindergarten program. Mrs. Dartis, Mrs. Moran, Mrs. Seaman, Mrs. Gaskewski, Mrs. Warner, Mrs. Ely, Mrs. Engel, and Mrs. Gross. So, thank you to them for participating in the pre-K Early Birds program. All right, looking into some agenda items, as we had said, there's lots of items as we start getting into contracts, renewal of contracts, but we are going to look at payment of orders and payment of some bills, as well as a treasurer's report. Perhaps the payment of July bills, if in fact our July meeting is canceled. We're looking for approval of the general fund budget for the 25-26 school year at $39,675,656 with the appropriate millage tax rates, as well according to what was now, what is presented right now in and on our website for public review. Looking for the Homestead-Farmstead Resolution for the 25-24-25 school year and the resolution associated with that. Recommend the Board approve the Workman's Compensation Insurance with UPMC Work Partners. A motion to authorize the Director of Financial Affairs to make budget and fund transfers for the end-of-the-year closeouts. A motion to purchase and install adaptable playground equipment at the elementary school through a CoStarz vendor Playground and Recreation for $307,145. Those funds will be coming from access funds from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, we're excited about this project. We have a motion to approve the transfer from the General Fund to the Cafeteria Fund to write off lunch, what we would call a bad lunch debt. Bad debt is for the 23-24 school year. We are still working on what that, the finality of that number. It should have that number as we continue to work closer to the end of that school year. We have appointment of district solicitors and special counsel. We're looking for Daniel Altland, Attorney-at-Law, for approval for Dan Altland to serve as our Chief Solicitor. Carl Beard for the Beard Legal Group, as well for any labor negotiations and special counsel, and Saxon and Stump for Special Counsel, primarily with special education and other related matters. Does everybody want me to repeat this?
No.
Yeah, we can read that twice.
Going into some contracts, we have access for sports and student insurance, Blue Line Safety for our Armed Security Officer, and Security Safety Services for Events, our Capital Region Partnership for Career Development, the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit, CSIU, and that's to begin our transition for our student information system. And that will be a slow transition, one year, from Power School to CSIU's Ed Point Educational System Synergy. CM Regent for Property and Casualty Insurance, ClearPath Pediatric, DiCon Youth Services for a student for the Center Point Day Treatment Program. Dr. Tag Gloss as our school dentist. Thank you, Dr. Gloss, Glossner. Kathy Kizner as Independent Contractor for Public Relations and Community Relations. Nutrition, Inc. to be our food service provider for the 25-26 school year. Pinnacle School Doctor, the River Rock Academy, Specialized Education of Pennsylvania to do some extended school year services. UPMC Express Care and UPMC Urgent Care to do PPD tests and physicals for new employees. Those are the TB tests. Joanne Zahn for Occupational Therapy Services, and we thank Mrs. Zahn for what she does. And motion for policies, first reading capital assets and 706 property records. We have three donations also for your consideration. A motion to approve $4,423.20 from the softball boosters for the installation of the softball fence. A motion to approve a donation of the Yamaha Upright Piano to the Sesquonita High School Music Program from the Sheehan Family. And a motion to approve an anonymous donation of $100 to be applied to delinquent lunch accounts. We're also looking for your consideration on some discipline committee recommendations, and those will be added accordingly by student number. And of course, we have some disposition of some outstanding items as we look to make sure that our storage is capable of handling things where we don't just continue to add and add when material is not being used. That rolls out agenda items. Any questions on those items? Lots of contracts, lots of matters, but very appropriate for this time of year as we look to begin the school year. All right, hearing none, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Snyder for Curriculum and Instruction Updates. Ms. Snyder?
Thanks, Dr. Fox. Of course, I'll have a few updates later for you during the annual report along with everyone else, but I just wanted to make sure to mention that we're super excited. Today was the first day to start the trade day sessions for our district teachers and staff. So, we hit the ground running. We had several groups in working today, whether it's curriculum or grade level or department days. You know, we have a whole schedule for the entire summer, so we were, you know, really excited to get started with that today. And then also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that next week, a week from today, I know Mrs. Tosh is going to talk about it a little bit during the annual report, but lifted 2025 is a week from today. So, really excited for that conference at the high school next week. And then continual planning, we know as soon as school ends, we start, and we are already planning for next school year. So, I want to make sure to mention that a lot of planning and a lot of work has already gone into. I know Mrs. Bressi's worked really hard on the extended school year, getting that ready to go at our middle school. And then, high school and middle school administrators working hard on summer school and providing those opportunities for our students. And then, we are also heavily working on our Early Birds Kindergarten Camp, which will be the first week in August at the elementary school. And then, excitedly planning for our administrative retreat for two days in July. So, we have a lot up and coming for that in another month. And then, just really, we're already diving in and taking a look at August in-service days for our teachers and staff. We have four days in August that we are planning for, a trade day that we're planning for, and three days of new teacher induction. So, it's a lot of days in August, but we have to start now because there's a lot of work in that. So, really excited just to kind of hit the summer running with planning for those events that are up and coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Snyder? All right, we're going to bat out of order a little bit here. I thought maybe you guys would like that term. And we're going to go ahead and start with West Side Singers and the Choir Trip Proposal. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Okay, first of all, I would like to thank you all for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. I know the students appreciate it, and thank you for Mr. Funk for making this possible. Secondly, I would like to propose that West Side Singers goes to, insert drum roll please, Universal Orlando Resort next spring. I have a handout here. I tried to divide it so you guys could more easily spread it. Here you go. That's no problem. Please feel free to look over it, formulate any questions that you might have if you guys would also like to overlook it. Yes, we definitely need chaperones. Always needs chaperones. Okay. So, thank you. While you are looking over that, let's go ahead and dive into, and I'll keep this as brief as possible, leaving time for questions afterwards. The goal of this trip is to provide opportunities for the students to get experience, learn, and perform for some professionals in the field. Not only will the students be able to perform at University Lagoon Stage for a ready and happy audience, but students will also have the opportunity to work at a Foley workshop, which, if you do not know, means that they'll be learning about sound design for things like movies. I have personally taught a Foley class, so I find this very interesting. The bigger benefit, though, that applies to these students directly is they will be given the opportunity to underscore a movie with their choral sound. So, using what they have learned here to do what Universal Studios does, which I find incredible and a really amazing opportunity for the students. You can see the timeline here. That first travel day is actually going to be after school. We won't depart until about 3 o'clock when the bus will get here. 3:30 is when we'll leave, so that will be after school. Again, trying to minimize the amount of school that these students will be missing. The approximate timeline that I'm looking at is in mid-April. We're kind of sandwiched awkwardly in the spring semester by an earlier spring break, and then by the choir concert at the end of the month. So, hopefully, finding a happy meet right in the middle. The cost there is actually why this is going to be a combined choral trip, because unfortunately, the band has decided not to go with us. They're seeking other opportunities. But, because we want it to be as cheap as possible for the students and also to give as many students the opportunity, this is a once-in-a-lifetime trip for some of these kids. I know it was for me. And so, we want to get this to as many of them as possible. You can see the price breakdown here, again, showing you what the different rooms, what the different types will be. Below that, you can see what's included in the trip. Primarily, I want to direct your attention to that last part, though, the full-time tour director. That was very beneficial on this last trip that we took to Philadelphia. I have never been to Philadelphia before this year. I'm not from this side of the state. So, having somebody there who worked at Cedar Crest High School for 33 years, retired and became a full-time tour director, he was there to guide us the entire way. The thing that's super exciting about this trip, we are the only school district, I think they have 10s going all over the country, all over the world. We are the only school district that is going on this particular trip. It is a very desirable trip. I have been told, and even the owner of the tour company that we are going to has offered to possibly go with us if her schedule aligns. We will have our pick of full-time tour directors, which I am very excited about as well. Last but not least, for what I have to discuss is the travel insurance. I know that this might be a sticking point, going to Orlando again after what happened in 2020 when it happened. I obviously am not here for that, but I can still feel the ramifications of that later. West Side used to go on big trips like this. I understand that this is a big trip, and I do not take it lightly, if you understand. But, we are hoping now, in 2026, that this can be a recouping year, a rebuilding year. There are already several things that I'm putting out for the students throughout the year to give them more opportunities to build the program, and this is another stepping stone in that. So, therefore, I wanted to offer for people who might be wondering, what happens, knock on wood it doesn't, but what if, what if things that we don't know about happen? There is travel insurance, and students have until, I believe, about a month and a half to two months for the trip to decide if they want to purchase that. They have more than enough time to discuss with their families, parents, and things, if they would like to buy into that. So, with that in conclusion, I hope that you see the benefit of this trip. I certainly do, and I know the students will appreciate it if it gets passed. So, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Real quick question. Travel to Orlando, is that going to be a bus ride from here to there?
Yes, it is, unfortunately, but-
Non-stop, or?
There will be, there will be breaks. There are several planned, like hour-long breaks for students to stop, rest, recoup, because I will also be going on this trip. It is very daunting to do the 17 hours. But, there is a stop in Virginia, a stop in North Carolina, and then I believe after that, they're planning on just going as long as possible with a stop right before we get to Orlando for students to get breakfast, get showered, and everything before they arrive.
So, no overnight accommodations from the travel at all?
Not on that first day, no. It will be that night, yeah.
Gotcha. That's a, that's a very long bus ride.
It is indeed. I can agree. But, I have, you've done it before. Yeah. It truly, as someone who did go on the trip, it is daunting, but it is fun. I'm personally traveling to Georgia this summer, which is about 13 hours, non-stop. I've done it. Is it the best? Obviously not. But, I would prefer them to have the opportunity, rather than to try and splurge for flying, which is just unfortunately not available at the current moment for this type of trip. Yes. So, potentially, and most likely because of the time of year, I do not want to impede upon their spring break. They deserve it. They're going to be working very hard on this. So, I feel like they deserve that break. So, they will probably be missing about, let's see, that first day, they'll be missing two to three school days, because we'll be looking at, hopefully, coming back on a, like arranging it so that we'll be leaving after school and then be arriving back on a Sunday. We'll be getting back around 3:00 PM that Sunday, is about what the time schedule is I'm looking at right now.
And my other, just advice, given the fact that we did live through the pandemic issue, and I know for some parents that may sting a little bit, just make sure that parents are aware of the, when they're purchasing the travel insurance, the exceptions to that, so that they're not thinking that if they buy travel insurance, everything is covered and, and that they're, they're not surprised by something. So, just, I would just recommend that they make sure that they are aware of the fine print on them. I'm a big fan of travel insurance. I've used it a number of times, and it's come in handy, but just so that they know.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Yes. Yes. So, actually, we are, we already have a fundraising person on our, on our West Side boosters. We are actually going to be enlisting another person so that we can enhance and further the fundraising opportunities, because again, we do understand that this is going to be a bigger commitment. That is also why we took a smaller trip this last year, so that they can save up their West Side funds. That rules over, so whatever money they already have will rule over. They'll be able to use it towards this trip.
And this is not just West Side, correct?
This will be West Side and Concert Choir. I am also potentially looking into inviting any band seniors, who this might be the last trip. They didn't know that they weren't going to get on a big trip, because unfortunately, it is just between Mr. Karaher and I right now, the band's decision to withdraw. So, I potentially will be looking. He did say, however, that that might not happen, depending on what the band's schedule is. So, but yes, it will not be just West Side.
I'm just thinking, getting 30, 40 students, what, how confident do you feel you're going to be able to get that number of students?
So, I feel very confident in getting at least 30 students plus chaperones, because currently, we have 28 members in West Side alone. I know not every member of West Side's going to be able to go. However, we will have approximately at least 30 students plus chaperones. I feel a little bit more confident in 40 if we are including the Concert Choir, and then very confident if we have those band seniors that will be reaching 40. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not quite sure what happens next, but.
So, what would happen next is certainly after this, we would look to seek approval if the Board is in agreement for June, and that would allow you the opportunity to begin that framework, to work on fundraising and the next steps and all the organization that comes along with this. Is this through a particular organization that's doing all of the, all the booking and?
Yes.
Okay.
Notability Travel Agency. They are actually a music education-specific travel agency. They're actually located conveniently in Mechanicsburg. I've actually met many of the tour directors, many of the Board of that company in person at events. We have been using them. I know they used them for their Virginia Beach trip at least, and then we used them for this past year for Philadelphia. And they will be doing everything, booking and all of that. So, that's covered there.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much. All right. We're going to go ahead and, we'll go, Mr. Markowitz, if you want to talk about Coach's Matrix revisions, discussions?
All right. So, with the Coaching Matrix, also, we have a slide as well for tickets for next year and some ideas that we have. So, not much really changed here. We crunched the numbers. I thought the numbers were good. We're going to keep our sport classifications the way they were with our Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, and Tier Four. Just makes sense, like I said, with the Tier One sports being a little bit longer. And then, like, I mean, we don't want to make too many changes here with the classification, so we want to remain the same. Tier One sports, the salary begin at 5,000. 65% of that salary will be the assistant coach salary at 3,250. The varsity football assistant will be 70% instead of 65. Junior high head coach salary will begin at 3,000, that's 60%, and the assistant coach for junior high would be 2750, which is 55%. Every year will be increases, so the head coach salary will increase 150 per year, assistant coach 75 per year, junior high 50, and junior high assistant coach would increase 25 per year.
All right. Is that if the same person takes over that seat, or is that regardless?
Same person, like, they got to be like, so, let's just say we have a head coach for three years, and then they become an assistant coach for another program or a head coach for another program, it would restart, and they wouldn't get that.
Let's say if two assistant coaches, and one has been there two years, and the other one's only been there one year, they would be making different salaries, correct?
Yep.
So, it would, just trying to figure that out in my head. Bear with me. So, at some point, the base salaries here would all need to change, other than just this, or else every time you hire an assistant coach, in 10 years, they would be making what we hired an assistant coach at 10 years ago.
Correct, yeah.
So, you want to think about that at some, somehow.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just so I'm understanding it. Thank you.
Yeah. Tier Two, so basically the same kind of thing here, just the salary begins a little smaller, same percentages, same increases as well for the head coach, assistant coach, junior high head, junior high assistant. Okay. Tier Three, you know, again, same formula here. You know, the biggest thing for me is that the coaches understand why they're making a certain salary. So, I think this is a good organized formula for them to understand that better. But, same increases with Tier Three sports as well. So, just other important details. So, after year 10, we want the, so, we can't keep, you know, there's got to be a ceiling. So, after year 10, if they've been here 10 years, we want to continue to give them increases, but obviously not as high as they normally would be. The head coach salary would be 75 per year, assistant coach 50, junior high head coach 40, and junior high assistant coach 25. The matrix, like, we showed it last time, the matrix is very much similar. The numbers break down the exact same way, and that would be that after the 10 years. So, tickets, just some ideas we have here. I want to bring ticket prices back up to $5. If you look at other schools that we go to, they're typically $5, some are actually seven or eight. We want to keep our students free, senior citizens free as well. Charge for all events. We're going to go ahead and try and charge for everything next year. Baseball, softball, junior high, track, and we're going to do the best we can. I'm confident we can come up with a structure and organization where we can absolutely, you know, charge people as they come in for baseball and softball. That will take some planning, but I think it's something we should do. The family pass, the family pass would be, now, we really want to, that's part of the reason, too. I think if we charge for all events, the family pass is a much more attractive idea for people. If we don't charge in the spring, people are going to say, well, okay, I'm going to spend $150, and my kid only plays, you know, in the fall, but we don't charge in the spring. So, why am I going to buy that family pass? I think if we charge for everything, then people are going to want to purchase that family pass. So, they would get in for all 2025, 2026 athletic competitions. This would not include PICO, Tri Valley playoffs, district games, state games, those they have to pay separate for. Pico's for a scholarship, Tri Valley will be for the league, and district and state games, obviously, there's nothing around that. We have to pay those fees. But, I think this is something that can really help, you know, bring in more money for, for the school district. And, you know, listen, it's more expensive to maintain events now. Our events are getting way more expensive to hold, you know, so we just want to make sure that we have a plan here, and I think this is pretty fair. You know, a lot of people come up to me and say, oh, my goodness, you know, I love coming here. You guys have the cheapest tickets, and that's great. I love that, but we also have really nice facilities here. So, I think we should, we should charge it right around $5.
The family pass, two adults plus one, what does that mean?
So, there would be the two adults plus, they'd get a plus one. So, we charge middle school, and we charge, you know, the high school kids get in for free, but the middle school kids, the elementary kids, they don't. So, what we can do there is, you know, be two adults, and maybe if they have a middle school kid or an elementary school kid, they would, the three of them would get in for free.
That was, that was my next question, because you said students free. So, how much is it for a non-high school student to attend?
It's $5. Keep it at five.
$5 per adult, $5 per?
Yeah, we keep it at five, yeah. Yeah, we didn't want to complicate and say students from other schools are three, or whatever it is. I think that's, that's pretty complicated. So, I think we want to keep everything at $5.
Students free, all Sesquonita students free?
The high school.
Just high school, not all?
Correct. They've been doing the all-high school passes. I mean, when I got here, so the kids will get them their freshman year, and they get to keep them, and they get in for all the best.
Before that gets published, I think we need to clarify, high school students free?
Correct.
Because then the middle school and elementary school students have to pay $5.
They don't get the all-sport passes, no.
Okay. So, that's where the plus one comes in.
Exactly. So, those are just some ideas that we have. You know, that's something I think that can really help us.
I had a question about the matrix. Is this okay to go back?
Please, yeah.
I had talked about this before. I still, help me to understand, okay, let me start over. Last year, we instituted the whole idea of waiving the matrix and what, I don't want to go into all those details. I really, I really liked that idea. I don't like that it was happening before the Board approved it necessarily, but I like the idea, and I think it really empowered our coaches, gave them a lot of freedom.
like the idea and I think it really empowered our coaches, gave them a lot of freedom. So help me to understand why we can't do that again.
I mean, I think the coaches, this is just better for the coaches as their increases go up every year. Um, they have the postseason pay as well that we're going to be doing but for weekly. So I think it's a bet, this matrix is better for our coaches. Um, I understand what you're saying when it comes to, you know, forego, letting them decide where the money goes and all of that, but I just think.
My, my only concern would be, let's say I'm a head coach, but I have a job or something that I'm going to be here, you know, half an hour late every day or whatever. So would, it behoove me to pay, to take part of my salary and give it to someone else who agrees to be an assistant, although it's not in the matrix, the district hasn't agreed to pay for just assistant. But I can't be a head coach because I'm going to be thirty minutes late, but if I can get another assistant and I could give them some of my salary and take that off of my plate, that, that will give me the freedom to do that. Like, I, I know financially this works. But if I'm just thinking what we were able to do, and it seemed like a number of our coaches took advantage of it, was to give the coaches an opportunity to take less money and hire more staff than the board, it would still be board approved, but more staff than is contained in this matrix. Just seemed like a really big win-win to me. I, I, um, so I'm not sure why, why we wouldn't keep doing that, that's what I don't understand.
All right. Ooh, I guess I'll chime in here, uh, from a coach's perspective and I guess from a business manager's perspective as well. Um, as a coach, I wanted that for so many years, you know, because what I was doing was gifting my volunteer coaches at the end. Um, so yes, I was all in favor of that. Um, now, um, all against it, sitting in this seat, um, just because that requires all kinds of additional setup in the payroll system. It includes, um, these positions include peers, so we're going to be setting up numerous more people for, for peers and things like that. So from an administrative perspective, it doesn't make sense and I was able to do it, you know, for nine years, just gifting my volunteers, you know, at the end of the season that way.
Is there, is there any way we could give them, uh, that we could figure out that they could do this with us, say, a stipend or something? Or is a stipend also subjected to peers and everything else?
I believe so, yes.
So you're. So you're suggesting. All right, so we, the reason we would not do this is just because it would be a financial, it would be a nightmare in the, in the financial office?
Also, Mike, you can't do that because then they could move all their coaches around so they had the most seniority and you'd be paying them more money and they'd be splitting more money. If you had an assistant coach on the football team for ten years and they weren't going to be the assistant coach anymore, they would still come back as the assistant coach and we'd be paying them that extra seventy-five dollars for ten years when they switched to a new position.
Well, I, I would, that, I, a good point, but I think.
That would be very hard mathematically to figure out too.
No, I think it would be a good point, but, but I think it would be easy to rectify because when we, when we approve coaches, we have to approve it and, and say that we are waiving the matrix. Then you could, um, you could approve your assistant coaches per the matrix and anyone that's being paid differently could be, um, we could pay them as a, hire them as a paid volunteer. So they're not going to have seniority as an assistant coach, they would just be hired as a paid volunteer. Which you could, that's a thing, for sure. So.
Are there current situations now, I think I know the answer to this, where in last year, there were salaries that were being split by? How did those, moving forward, how is that affecting those employees? Are they coming back? Are those individuals coming back?
Um, so we actually didn't have that much last year of splitting, we had a few, um, but not as much and, and they are coming back as volunteers. Um, we have a situation with cheer right now where we have one coming back as a volunteer anyway, um, because they were splitting last year, so they're staying.
And they're not getting get paid? Okay, so I guess maybe, um, because I was, from the information that we had gotten from the board perspective, both from the matrix, which I love by the way, um, and, um, the salary breakdown and our budget, I still am questioning, I still have a question about how cheer is being budgeted into a one number line item when in the matrix they are two different tiers. It seems to me, fall is a different tier than, than competition, but yet this year in the budget, I think I asked you offline one day, why did we move it to one number? And I think the explanation was that they were being paid one time, splitting, um, and, and I think that was part of the reason why originally you had two different assistant coaches listed and I pointed out, how are we doing that when there's only one for fall, not knowing that these were, they were taking the assistant coaching position for the full year and dividing it in two, so they would have two assistants the whole year. Is that kind of correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so that was what was done last year, so now I have a better understanding why you did it.
Yeah.
Um, uh, just repeating what was, was last year. But now that we have only one paid coach for the fall and then a volunteer for fall, but there's one number in our budget for fall and competition, I'm not sure how that then, do you, do you take the other coach and that, does the other assistant become the assistant for the winter and the other one the volunteer? Like, I don't know.
So, we did have coaches splitting for cheer, but we're not, we're going to move past that. So one is going to become a volunteer, one's going to become the paid assistant coach. And we've already, I've already discussed it with, with the cheer coaches and what we're going to do moving forward. Now.
Is that for the whole year? So like, we've already approved our, the paid.
The fall is, the fall's good.
Right.
Um, but then when we move on to winter competition cheer, there could be just two coaches and not that third volunteer. So we're waiting, uh, till we get to the winter. But we split it because fall cheer and winter cheer are just completely different. I mean, winter cheer, they're competing, they're competing for, you know, they're doing the competition. So I think that is different than what they do in the fall, not saying they don't do a lot in the fall, but they do, but they cheer basically for the football games and on the sideline, they do sideline cheer and stuff like that.
Right, so they're two different teams, so we can't keep them as one line item?
But it might be two different coaches, it, it probably isn't, but it could be.
Could very well be, yes.
Well, apparently it's going to be two different assistants.
What?
We're going to have two different assistants, because we have one that's already been approved for the fall, but that won't be the same one.
So for the whole year, we have one head cheerleading coach?
One head cheerleading coach, two different tiers, so she's the head fall sideline coach and the head.
It could be.
Competition, and then there were, a vo- there's an assistant in the fall and an assistant in the winter.
Is that something we need, is that something you, maybe you need to look at? I like the matrix too, by the way, but if we could have a different co- if they're, they're two different, are they two different sports? Is it like?
Yeah.
So, so it would be two different head coaches?
It could be, but he's saying they're not, there's not likely to be. It's kind of like your distance coach for track is usually the cross-country coach, but they're paid differently, they're contracted differently, they're two different seasons and they're two different tiers. That's the same thing that's going to be with cheerleading according to the matrix.
If the, I'm getting in the weeds here, sorry, I don't fully understand all this. If, if the fall head cheerleading coach decides she does not want to be the competition coach, then there is, there can't be a head competition cheerleading coach.
We'd have to go find one.
But we, we're only paying, we don't, the mi- okay.
We're paying them two different monies.
Yeah, we'd, we'd move cheer into two different seasons and not just one. Like, right now they're grouped in fall and winter, that's what they're.
But that wouldn't be an assistant then, it would be a head coach, okay?
Yeah, the, all the money is still there, but last year there was listed in the line item on the budget for fall and for winter. This year it's put under one number for, in the fall. And I, from a, from a, an accounting standpoint, I'd like to see them separated. They're two different tiers, they're two different, they're two different positions.
That's an easy fix. So the budget, yes, it was, it's one line item because we built the budget off the old matrix, so there will be some tweaking to the line item details, you know, if we approve the new matrix.
And I think my only other concern, just, just a word of concern is the concept of gifting to volunteers. I, I just, the amount of money and just, that can get a little dicey. I just would be careful with that and how we're recommending that or not, or, not even recommending, just, um. I'm not sure what the right word is. Seeing the practice, because I, I, even from, even from like a booster standpoint, if boosters are doing that, I don't know if they are, but if they're giving money to coaches, that can be a tax issue, so.
Yeah, I think each individual is responsible for their own taxes. The only taxes that the district's responsible for is through employee, uh, taxes that are appropriated through our, through our payroll system. All, all other individual, uh, anything that could be gifted has to go through their own private taxes and their own private accountants. Um, we don't, as an entity, get involved in any, any of that matter. But, uh, i- is, is that something, not to, not to revisit, but is that something you want us to put an asterisk by and allow for the waiving of a matrix to have that malleability? Knowing that it could still have some adjustment issues? Um, if, if that allow, if that's something you want, I think that's something we can, certainly this is, this is a, you know, I think that, uh, first of all, Mr. Markowitz and Mr. Brousse did it, did an incredible job, meeting multiple times, researching, um, soliciting, uh, feedback from other districts, getting different ideas. Um, during your course of your research, not to put you on the spot, but did you see where there's opportunities for other districts to waive, waive the matrix? Because I have not seen that previous to this.
Not that I saw, no. Now, my question is, let's just say we do give them that option and they can waive the matrix, would that include the postseason pay as well? Would they be waiving the postseason pay? Is that part, I know that's, I've included it with the matrix, but is that part of the matrix?
I, I think that's up to the coach and to answer your question, I personally think we should because I think whatever we can do to support our coaches, the better. And if this is just one more thing, we, one more opportunity we can give our coaches to support them, to give them flexibility, to give them an opportunity, uh, to, you know, be all about the kids, less about the money, I'd rather have more adults, less money. If we can afford to do that and if we're able to empower them, especially if, what I heard tonight was, some of them aren't taking advantage of, maybe they don't care about it, but for those, the more we could help and support our coaches, the better. And I think it would be up to the coach whether or not that, I mean, it's, it's them deciding what they're doing with their salary. Uh, so if they want that to go into postseason or not, they could figure that out. But to answer your question, I know it would be a pain for the district business office, but apparently it's been happening, but I would, I would, I would want that because I think it's just one more way to support our coaches. And what we had heard was that's something that they wanted, but maybe those coaches aren't here anymore, I don't know what, what else thinks.
I think as, I think as long as, as we, certainly as an administrative team, do a better job of allowing coaches to understand that that's something they can do. Um, you know, that, that, that is something that they have the potential to do. And then we would have to delineate that, certainly on the board, uh, with a notation that is waived and here's the, here is the salary for each individual based upon the waiving and how that would be split out. So it would almost be a couple of different motions, um, on the agenda as we have done in the past.
Does postseason pay go to the assistant coaches too? I didn't remember that.
Head coach and assistant, so head would be one fifty per week and the assistant coach would be seventy-five per week for postseason. I mean, you look at softball right now, they're, they're going to be three weeks already past the season, three, four weeks.
Yeah, so, like, I'm thinking like for football then, let's just say football, would you be paying for all, every assistant then?
The head coach and the varsity assistant coach.
Okay, so it'd be just those two.
Correct.
So I think in terms of these, the, the waiving of the matrix, usually that happens with not, with more, adding more coaches that would leave, get out of volunteer status and get something. And so maybe it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as much of a hiccup for the, the postseason. Um, I don't know, I mean, I just, I'm thinking if it's only those two.
I mean, if, if it is all coaches and it's all, then yes, postseason play gets divvied across the board.
Yeah.
So that fifty dollars or whatever it is gets div- divided.
But he's saying no, he's saying it's only going to the head coach and the assistant coach.
Well, I understand, but if we're waiving the matrix.
Waive the matrix.
To eight different, if we have six coaches and that head coach says, I want to go ahead and I'm going to add three additional coaches because I'm now taking this lump of money and now breaking it apart, so yes, it would then in that instance. Because we've had coaches do that before. If that's the direction we want to continue to go, then I think we need to, to clarify that. And that's fine, but we'll just have to make an asterisk, do that and understand that and delineate that.
Or maybe, maybe you term the additional coach something different. You know, maybe it's first assistant is your main assistant coach or something like that, then you, you know what I mean? There's, there, and when it comes to waiving of a matrix. I think if anything, if we do go with the option of waiving the matrix, it'd be much easier to follow now because of the work that you did, you know what I mean? That we wouldn't be sitting there going, I have no idea whether, what matrix are we talking about? We'd be able to add it up and know, okay, here's what we budgeted, here's what they're doing, it, you know, from our perspective, I know, not from yours, Jason, but it's a different, different thing.
I really, I really do like the term paid volunteer, only because I, I have a part-time job where I work for the Pennsylvania Department of Ed and I am technically what they call a paid volunteer. So they pay me and they take taxes, but I'm considered a volunteer, not an employee of Pennsylvania Department of Ed. So it is a thing.
It's just like the goal to, you know, when I would ask some of my coaches when I first started, like, you know, you make this salary, a lot of them didn't know why they make that salary, what went into that number or why. So I think for me, it's, it's big about clarity, you know, these coaches need to understand, this is why I get paid, you know, a chart, hey, it's my fourth year, this is my sport, this is my tier, this is what I should be making. I think that goes a long way as for any coach, just to understand that, and I think that.
And kudos to you, because I, um, there has not been clarity. I mean, I could think of drawings that were all but crayon drawings, trying to explain what this was. So you've, you've provided the clarity in, in a short time, so I, I think we all really appreciate that.
So we'll go ahead and look to add this on the June's, uh, board agenda for the meeting in June seventeenth. So we'll do a motion to approve, uh, the coaches' matrix starting in twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the ability to waive the matrix as per, as per discussions with head coach. Um, we'll just say waive the matrix and then in that, we'll add the asterisk, that's associated inside of that document, which will then become part of the coaches handbook, which they'll all have that transparency approach moving forward. All right. We'll go back up to the top. Uh, we're going to go ahead and talk a little bit, transition here into roof systems.
Looking at part of our overall, um, studies that we've done with Pinoni Engineering in conjunction with RLPS and Barton Associates, uh, one of the areas where we identified and I presented prior was some areas needed to continue with some of our roof treatment systems. We've been through a long-lasting partnership with Tremco and W I T Technologies, which allows for the weatherproofing and the restoration of roofing throughout the school district. Currently, right now, the elementary school is under warranty. There are two sections and parts here at the high school that we need to look at and restore and do, as well as a part in the middle school. So just moving on, a little bit of information on W T I, which is supported by PASBO, which is the Pennsylvania School Business Officers Association, and it is what we call a K P N project, which a K P N is a pre-construction scope development and it is, um, one of those that, it's a cooperative purchasing contract. Um, so therefore it is already pre-bid, uh, which is, which is a nice entity to be able to do. Just some references that Tremco provided that you'll see here, uh, we are one of those references as well because they've done work here for our school district prior. As you look here at the high school.
look here at the high school aerial photo, they did also some, what we would call thermal imaging, that occurred, actually on Easter, they came during that day and climbed up on the roof and did some thermal imaging, to discern if there's any other wet spots. And to our knowledge, everything came out to the positive. So what we are looking at here is a green section. The green section is an area that needs to be restored. That's what's called the base proposal. You'll see some of the pricing structure in a memo that's at your place. You'll see the transparency on the pricing. The green section here is recommended with a 25-year old, a 25-year restoration, which I would definitely 100% agree with, due to the pitches of the roof, as well as some of the external conduit. The black sections are original roofing installed in 2006. That is right there. The large square is the auditorium, and the triangle is the outer rings of the gymnasium, the lobby area, the gymnasium, and some locker room areas, I believe, of the gym, the gym areas. While those are called ad alternates, we would recommend doing those two areas as well, with the 25-year, 25-year roof system that's there. Moving into the Susquehanna Middle School, there is one section that needs to be done. That's not in warranty. It was restored in 2011 with a 10-year system, and they're recommending, of course, the 25-year system as well. And that will put everything at the middle school under warranty. Just some things associated with the KPN project. Most of the time, these projects will be done while students are in session, and they do have all of their, and will have all of their clearances, and they're responsible to provide those clearances ahead of time. There is no change orders associated with this, so there'll be no contractor change orders, and they'll have construction meetings along the way. We did a project with them. We used some of our ESRS funds to do certain parts prior, and there were no change orders associated with that, that were contractor-initiated. We did ask them to fix one of our crickets or weep drainage areas, and that was an add, and they did so without issue. Timeline, one of the things that they would be considering, that we would be considering, would be June Board Meeting approval. We would look to finalize the contracts and submittals, and look to begin this project either end of August through October, which would be completed by October 31st, because there is a timeline, at which time then, seasonally, you can't apply that material because of temperature changes. So roughly, what we would be looking to use our capital funds for, again, we are currently right now in an ESCO project. We are currently right now have an advertisement for, request for proposals for an ESCO project. This is not part of that proposal. So this is, this is separate. And it would be 1.175 26995, so roughly $1.2 million for the middle school, as well as the high school restoration areas. Some of these additional add-on alternates, Mr. Howell and I discussed, we do not believe we need at this point.
Can I ask a question? It says several places here that they'll produce, perform, excuse me, a roof scan, identify areas of wet insulation, and remove wet insulation. So they haven't done, they have not done that yet? And so is there a possibility that if they find a lot of wet insulation, that this price is going to go up considerably?
No, this price will not go up considerably, and the roof scans were already conducted. And if they find areas, once they start to remove, as part of the scope of the, of the proposal, they will be required to, to treat that.
So I'm just, again, I haven't had a chance to look at this since we just got it, but it says like, on number one, with a unit price to increase or decrease. So that's not correct. What does that mean?
Again, we will go through construction meetings, and if there's different areas, there's, this is the, what they would say, the contracted price. So there's tendency that it will not exceed 1.175 million dollars. So it could go down based upon it, and the contract actually come in a little under. But based upon the scans that they've already conducted, this is where, where they came in and did the proposal at.
Can we, can we approve it not to exceed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
A number of times over the, the meetings that we've had with regard to facility improvements, there was mention of the EFIS, or EPHIS, or however you pronounce that. But I'm noticing that you're not choosing to not do it. Why is that? Because that does seem to keep coming up a lot.
It really does, and that's a larger project. This is only an area right around the roof area. We need to have that scope done for the entire area.
Okay.
So instead of just patching a spot, part right now of our RFP for the ESCO includes a bid on the entire.
Okay, okay.
Treatment of the, of the exterior.
Very good, thanks.
You're welcome.
So is it look like, so based on the little check marks that you have, you're looking to do the base proposals, scope of work one and two, and then alternate number three? Is that where the numbers are coming together?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what we would do is, a motion to approve these not to exceed that number.
Okay.
And what that will do is get us on the contractors' construction list, and then from there, we will be able to continue to have those conversations and discussions to see if we can get that number down a little bit, or where we, where we end up.
And are we using the capital project money, the money?
Correct.
The loan?
Yeah, and that will be specified in the motion as well, if that is in agreement. All right, we're going to transition now into kind of our end of the school year, our '24-'25. And we do this on a regular basis. I get super excited about this, because it is our annual report. It's kind of taking a, really a deep dive, taking a look under the hood of our school district. Everything from comprehensive planning to elements that we've already presented on our school performance profile, to some really quick snapshot and videos that really do a nice job of portraying, because our students are more than just a singular-based test score, but their experiences are what really matter the most during this time. What they engaged with, how they, how they were able to demonstrate their learning, and what that matter means in terms of being able to live out our portrait of a graduate. So we're going to go ahead, transition now into that, and I'm going to ask for help along the way, which I brought an incredible team here today, that are going to really take a lot of the heavy leads when it comes to all these different parts. So I'll go ahead and start out at the beginning with our district comprehensive plan goals, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Snyder, who led the charge on our district comprehensive planning. Ms. Snyder?
Sure. So if you remember, just a couple months ago, we actually presented to you our, our three-year new district comprehensive plan. So just wanted to reiterate, we actually have some, some goals per building, and for the district that we're going to actually take a look at, and broke them down here for you. I know you guys have, you know, had seen this before, but I just wanted to make sure, each building kind of took a different little perspective with what they wanted to focus on, based on what the, the planning team decided. So at our elementary school, really just, we're going to be focusing on ELA and math and academic growth. And at our middle school, we actually are trying to, and we're going to be working with our administrative team, just to sort of plan this out over this summer, because again, we have three years that we're going to be implementing this in phases. But at the middle school, we wanted to take a look at some professional learning programs for, for the staff, and then also really taking a look at that middle school schedule to provide targeted interventions. So we'll be looking at that planning as well. And at the high school, really just taking a look for our teachers and our administrators, some professional learning opportunities that we'd like to put into place. And then we also had some district-level goals that we wanted to take a look at. So really in relation to curriculum and trying to align with some of our board goals that we've had this year, just making sure that we're taking a look at the planning and process manual, and then also really trying to take a look at our assessments as we move through the next several years, taking a look at the utilization of high-quality traditional and project-based learning assessments in all subjects, as listed in our planning and process manual. So we know we have a good start. We have a plan ahead, and we're going to continue to follow that. But definitely eight lofty goals that we will need to work through over the next several years. And we will definitely continue to give you many updates as we move through the process.
I think these comprehensive planning goals are really good for all of us, certainly as administrators, to continue to link our building-level goals with, as well as those school-level goals, as we continue. And they are, they are pretty lofty, and they are designated for 2028, but it's setting those benchmarks along the way, continuing that this doesn't become just a couple of numbers and a couple of statements that sit in the planning portal, and we never look at again, but something that was meaningful enough for us to really have a target and a hone on, and begin to chip away at these goals, because ultimately, they're, they're super important to be able to meet for the learning needs of our students. This was, certainly the next slide is a, is a tutorial documentation here of our student-led physical depiction of our portrait of a graduate, which I think that about a year ago, we, we really worked hard on developing what we want our Blackhawks to know, understand, and do by the time that they leave the nest here, they leave our school district. And it's being persistent and resilient, it's being strong communicators, engaged citizens, that we saw more and more this year, and doing it in a very responsible way, which is personally responsible, and being innovators. So as we continue to bring and showcase our students here at the caucus meetings and at the board meetings, we want to continue to highlight these elements of our portrait of a graduate, and begin that extension as we look at those career pathways, and taking our academic learning guide, and developing those career pathways, and back mapping that into those opportunities for our students. So we're excited about the work, the continual work that we have to continue to bring those wings into our portrait of a graduate. So the '24-'25 is our collective goals. These were the goals that we set universally, that you set as a board, and we're excited to, to know that we are continually working on those. And the first one was to continue refresh and review and align, as well as prioritize our curriculum maps that are purposeful and discussed, taught in all areas, with a focus on targeted curricular content outlined within the curriculum revision cycle. And that's an ongoing goal. It certainly is one, I think, that's going to continue to be a legacy goal that we continue to work on. And the key is going to be then, to be able to support our teachers. Once it's written, once it's reviewed, once it's prioritized and approved, now it begins that process of how are we supporting our teachers to, to be able to transition, what those learning outcomes are, and what those specifically are within the classroom, to be able to continue to refine the art of teaching, and supporting our teachers in that endeavor. The next is plan, develop, and implement a high school town hall, with the purpose of collecting student feedback, and using that feedback to identify and prioritize student concerns and satisfactions, to begin board discussions on how to integrate the information into future decisions. And I, really, I couldn't be more proud of this team of 10, as well as the support of our administration, in particular, our high school principals, to be able to really open themselves up, to have these mature conversations with our students, who are able to demonstrate what they felt, what they, what they liked, what they want to see changed, and then ask the questions as to why, and accept some of those answers as well, and then also lead to some changes. And one of those changes this year, I think you spoke to it very well at graduation, was the, the, the color of their, the decorating of their hats for graduation, their caps. And it was really unique to see who they thanked, what some of their future plans was. And kudos to Mr. Funk and Mr. Page and Mrs. Gekter for really developing procedures to go with how that's going to look, and to the parents for their support on that as well. The next is complete an engineering study of the district, and use the results to make well-defined decisions and goals for short-term and long-term, pertains to our district facilities. So I think we're well on our way there, in support of Panone, as we continue, and thank you for allowing us to continue those, that partnership with, with Panone Engineering to help us through. As right now, currently, we are advertising an RFP for ESCO services that is due June 12th. And we're looking, I'm sorry, July 14th, with a pre-meeting June 12th here at the district. So we're looking to remain physically prudent by planning for predicted future expenses while maintaining programs and facilities. And a lot of that comes to hard work of the business office, the hard work of all of our cabinet members, to begin to really unpack what that budget is, what our expenses to actuals are, and beginning to continue that process of, of really that, that analysis over time. And I'm going to toss it over now for our elementary school overview. Mr. Ward?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Fox. Ooh, that's loud. Before I get started here, I just want to recognize three of our staff members at the elementary school as well, that just recently retired. So starting with Mrs. Black in the nurses' office, one of our rotating subs, amazing job here at Susquehanna. I believe she's here for seven years, if I'm not mistaken. Next up, Mrs. Brocious, kindergarten teacher, unbelievable teacher, just had the opportunity to work with her for the first time this year, and just very, very impressed. We're going to miss her dearly. And last but not least, and funny enough, I said this last week on Friday to the entire staff, that Mrs. Ferran actually had the opportunity to teach her children at Central Duff, and so it was kind of like full circle coming around, and just another amazing staff member, if I'm not mistaken, 21 years here at Susquehanna. So all them, they're going to be missed dearly, and we appreciate everything they've done for Susquehanna and Susquehanna Elementary School here over the years. So, once again, I didn't start officially with the elementary school until roughly November, but I want to preface this with Mrs. Walzman, and her keeping the train on the tracks and doing an absolutely amazing job. Cannot say enough great things about Mrs. Walzman, but when we got together, we collectively came up with some goals. It certainly is not the whole comprehensive list of goals, but these are some of the goals that we did come up with, with improving our communication with the families in the community. It didn't matter if we wanted to communicate in regards to academics' behavior, whether it's the bigger events, whether kids got muddy at field day and we're sending them home muddy. We just wanted to really improve our communication, and we were able to check that box. Improve our collaboration with the various partners and organizations that we work with. Here's just a couple examples, like the PTO wings, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Bigs in Blue, Fire and EMS. I think the collaboration that we have with a lot of these outside partners, we're going in the right direction with them as well. Another big-ticket item was building the foundation of our MTSS team, and to collect and analyze that data to determine the interventions that are best for each student individually. That was something we've been wanting to do for a couple of years, but this year, the team really put their heads down and dug deep, and, and we were able to establish this team. It's, we know it's going to be a long process to get it right where we want it, but we definitely have a very strong concrete foundation now to build off of. Just continue to improve our PBIS initiative with our high five values and school store, and the various rewards that we offer with our students. And that ties back into our culture, which I'm going to hit on for a minute, in a minute, I'm sorry, and planning professional development curriculum needs for the '25-'26 school year. I know you listened to our presentation in regards to math. We know math is a need within our building, and we have a great plan laid down. That foundation's going to be set next year with that Bridges program. We're already starting to plan for the '26-'27 school year as well, in regards to curriculum with our comprehension, comprehension needs and curriculum. So last, and I think one of the biggest things with elementary school is the, the climate and the culture for the students and the staff. And obviously, it's very difficult for an administrator to gauge that, but with the feedback that we receive from staff, from students, and from parents, I truly feel that we're going in the right direction. So we've made some really big improvements this year. So once again, we have a lot of different things that occur at the elementary school, and this is not a full comprehensive list, but the field trips the students had, the Halloween parade, the Fall Fest, the Spring Fest, the Book Fair, Steam Night, STEM Night, the Field Day, DJ Reggie, which is one of them PBIS rewards, the winter-spring chorus band concerts, Adopt a Family ran by Mrs. Lisa Perkins, unbelievable job with that. We had author visits, we had holiday fun events, junior achievement, and we tied a lot of fun things, even with the, the tough work that we had to do with PSSAs, just trying to change that culture, what that really looks like. So once again, that's not a full comprehensive list, but a lot of things that we were able to accomplish this year. Moving into our school achievement, once again, this is something that was, this is last year's data. If you already had a snapshot of this, I wasn't in the elementary school last year, but I, I own this data. So I just want everybody to understand, like, this is, this is our data, my data right now. From the things that we've done this year, from the sweat, equity, and work that our teachers put in with our students this year, I truly believe when we're talking about this in October, November, these numbers are going to look different. We're going to continue to improve these numbers. So once again, this is a snapshot when we look at the elementary school achievement, us compared to where we should be in the state, keeping in mind with the science and the biology, that, that's something that got moved to the fifth grade this year, so that's something we will not see next year for the elementary school. Moving into our PVAS data, which is our growth, we're looking good for ELA, but once again, we know math is a need, and that's really where we're putting our focus in. And you've approved the Bridges curriculum. I know that we're going to do a great job with that. The teachers are really excited about it. Mrs. Sabinski right here, the middle school elementary principal, middle school assistant principal, got us hooked up with Cumberland Valley. We were able to go and, and look at a couple classrooms there, and look at what the Bridges program looks like there, and that really sparked a big interest within our staff, so people are very excited about this. Now, to kind of tie- Now to kind of tie everything together here and really look at the collaboration of what our school year looked like, we'd like to present this video to you. This was put together by Mrs. Jody Freeworth, our computer teacher and tech person at the elementary school, and she did a fantastic job.
I'd like to take a moment and certainly thank Mr. Ward and Mrs. Walzman for their leadership, and we're certainly excited about the future of the elementary school. Thank you for all your hard work, and we're confident we're going to continue to see great things. So thank you very much. All right, we're going to move up to the middle school, and we have, welcome, Mrs. Sabinski, and thank you for your leadership, as well as Mr. Black as well. I know this is probably only, what, your fifth meeting? I think that you're-
Yeah, this was not intended. I'm on vacation the next board meeting, so Jason and I swapped out, so this is why you have me here this evening.
All right.
So the things he wanted to overview were just the continued best of the Black Hawks program and developing that positive behavior. As a result of all of that, the disciplinary referrals have dropped tremendously as a result of that. One thing we were looking to do next year to expand it is opening up and creating a PBIS school store. That way, there is more frequent weekly and monthly buy-in, not just the end of every marking period, so they could see, you know, that, the fruit of their actions and their behavior choices. All four grade levels got a trip this year, and that is all thanks to the wonderful PTO who did a tremendous amount of fundraising, so thank you to those ladies as well. The Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, this is our second year. The Bigs and the Littles went shopping at Target, and apparently the Bigs were actually able to shop for themselves this year too, so it was quite the great event I, I heard. Next year, we're going to continue to deliver the four digital citizenship lessons throughout the year. We continued the, we started the Black Hawk Day at the mid and end. That's where I believe the grade levels could go back to like creative arts and like finish any work and get caught up, since they're only with those creative arts teachers so many days with rotations. And then, just like elementary, we implemented our first Read Across Susquehanna with the Wishing Tree, thanks to that committee of ladies putting that together, and it's going to continue next year, but the book is to be determined. So from hearing what Mr. Ward said, this is something that you've seen before. Sometimes everybody likes looking at colors or different visuals, so if you could go ahead, to me, the best visual to show the amount of growth that the middle school has made are the last two slides. That's the percentages of advanced and proficient. As you can see, there are still some growth, but here's where I, I want you to focus on is going from 22 to 23 and 23 to 24, how much they're improving from 50 to 82% and things like that. So, you know, we might not be meeting the state average, but there's definitely some growth going on at the middle school. Thanks to all of the wonderful teachers there. And special thanks to Ms. Lindy Levann for putting this together.
Thank you very much, and we, we appreciate all the leadership at the middle school as well, and are excited about the future of the middle school and having you here for a full year.
For the year.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll go ahead and transition now into the high school. Mr. Funk?
Thank you very much. I'm excited to share a few highlights over this year. I know our student board reps do an amazing job keeping you guys posted throughout the year. As was mentioned earlier, we have a very active Big Brothers and Big Sisters program here at Susquehanna, which is a great program between the buildings, so I'm very thrilled that we're able to bring it back. Something new on a regular basis this year, based on the Student Mental Health Survey at the end of last year, they wanted regular activity club days. So the goal was twice a month. We scheduled a club period, basically the schedule starts about an hour late, spend an hour with the club activity period, and we were pretty close to getting it twice a month. So that's mixed in with all the other activities we have going up there. A few career and high, college and the high school data up there. We had 84 college and the high school classes registered and paid for this year from students, and 14 students took dual enrollment classes. Those are classes off-campus at Hack, Central Penn, or another university. Mrs. Flowers does an amazing job with our career and transition and placing our students who are interested in exploring different career fields. There's the data that we had. We had students and internships, work experience, job shadowing, and those do not count the career and technical center co-ops. Those are just in-house Susquehanna students. And new this year, the Manufacturers Association held a pre-apprenticeship program where I had two students that went once a week, every week for most of the school year, then took tests, and we had two students graduate from the pre-apprenticeship program with the Manufacturers Association. So that's a great, kudos to them. Just a couple of overviews that, it just seems like four bullet points, but these were major tasks this year. The career pathways, which we presented and with the career handbook that outlined the courses students should take over the course of the careers. The college timeline, which will be sent again to families at the beginning of this year of what do you do each year once you hit a freshman to senior to help guide you if you're planning to go to college. Very pleased with Mrs. Reader, she was a new addition to the English department. Her students and her class revived the high school newspaper in a digital format. It's called the Black Hawk Beacon. Beacon is not spelled incorrectly, it's a play on words if you get it for being a hawk with a beak. So just wanted to clarify because someone said you spelled beacon wrong. No. Community promotions, Mr. Sheppeler's class still is very active. They're constantly working with Chamber of Commerce to assist in their different businesses throughout Perry County, which is a great outreach. The PVAS scores, this is not new information to share with you, but it was a target that we worked on this year. Looking forward to seeing what our test scores come back, because there's a very different approach this year monitoring through testing. Students took the whole session, we did not have groups finishing up in 10 minutes. So I'm cautiously optimistic with the data we're going to be receiving next year. Here is the exit survey of what the class of 2025 plans on doing now that they've graduated. Give you a minute to look at that. And some of the businesses where they're planning to enter the workforce, the students responded, and there's a sampling of the different schools that our students, students And here's our end of the year video. Worked on it, well, Olivia McBreen did it. I mean, I told her what I wanted to see, but you know Olivia, she said, here's your video. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk, and thank you to Mr. Page and Mr. Markowitz. We appreciate that collective leadership and certainly look forward to the implementation of those career pathways as students begin that process from grade nine all the way to grade, grade 12, as they link those courses to a career area or career cluster that they're most interested in. All right, so I'm going to turn it back over now to academic operations. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, just a little overview of things. Several goals were met this school year, so very happy about that. But we definitely were able to continue curriculum revisions and work on the designated subjects that we shared with you in our curriculum review cycle, and we were able to also continue working with teams from each school and the district level on our Curriculum Council and our Professional Learning Task Force committees. We partnered with liaison and leadership at the United Way to continue the growth of our Ready-for-School preschool program. We have Ms. Bridget, who comes every Tuesday faithfully, so we're happy to actually be going into our third year of that as well. Worked with the district contracted social worker, basically to implement our grant requirements that we use for that service, and to expand programming and actually starting work on our new trauma-informed program as we move through next school year. Finalized ESAR grants this year, which was a big success and a big feat, but we're very happy to do that, and actually finalized those expenditure plans after several years of working through that. We continued the Early Bird Summer Programming through the use of PCCD and district funds, and we're also going to be implementing, continuing to implement several PCCD grant expenditure plans and revisions as needed. We always continue to implement our federal programs, Titles One, Two, Three, and Four, grant expenditure plans and revisions as needed. And of course, then every year, we work diligently for months, winter into spring, trying to finalize our Trade Day catalog of professional learning summer sessions and opportunities for our staff. Just want to make sure to list some goals and things that we are working on, and I know we've discussed several of these already, but you know, we continue to have several lofty goals as we move in, working with our Curriculum Council and our Professional Learning Task Force committees. There's just always work to be done on those levels. So, we're going to continue implementing the curriculum cycle process with our departments, and implement our updated two-year induction program. So we're excited to actually be having our first year moving into that year-two cycle. We're going to continue to coordinate implementation and evaluation of the district's comprehensive plan, as we spoke about earlier, for the next several years, but also continue to coordinate implementation and evaluation of our district TSI plans, which are our building-level plans at the elementary and the high school that we will be sharing with you a little bit later this summer at our August meetings. And then we're going to continue grant planning and implementation. That actually kicks off in the summer months for the following school year, and then just really continue review and implementation of our ELD program with our English language learners. We have several goals and things that we want to work on as we move into next school year, so continuing to help those students. Thank you.
I'm going to pinch-hit for Mrs. Kizner when I talk about communications overview. And one thing about communications, though, is while she helped us a lot in terms of pushing out through our district social media channels, pushing out communications, handling a lot of volunteers, and handling communications to push out through the digital flyers through Peach Star, it is really the sole responsibility of all of us in terms of communication, right? It's sending our message, sending our message, and what we do, how we do it, attending different events, being present to be able to support our students. Communication is more than just what we print, what we publish. It's what we do on a daily basis. So with that said, I am very proud to have Mrs. Kizner and what she was able to do to help us continue with that ultimate goal. She certainly has collaborated with many organizations throughout it, throughout our time, with the Operation Warm, to be able to provide coats and jackets, being able to support, being instrumental in our town hall, the backpack program for students as well, to be able to have some take-home food for students. Our Jingle Bell Jog that supported our foundation, but really it was larger than just a fundraiser. It was a fun event to be able to bring the community together and just have a good time at the 2.5-mile run and race. And celebrating our Apple Distinguished School District, not just by one singular school, but universal at all three schools. The Bigs and Littles School Shopping Event that was discussed, a lot of fun there, and the Thanksgiving Meal Distribution, and an outstanding Elementary Halloween Parade program. That's really great. So Mrs. Kizner coordinated a lot of these in collaboration with our district social worker, our school counselors, and our administration team to be able to do that. She certainly renewed and issued well over 100 volunteer badges. That means to check through clearances, schedule appointments, and working to do that, and did so very diligently. And updated the sign-in programs through Peach Star. Peach Star is our electronic data. It's a free program, at which time, when flyers come through, we update those flyers and send those flyers, and they come through to parents who sign up or dis-sign up for it to be able to receive those flyers. So no longer do they go like they do for my son into a backpack, and it's like this black hole where they never go home. It goes out electronically, and you have a chance to scan those and see those flyers. And she just does a wonderful job, so we look forward to having Mrs. Kizner continue to flourish and develop in this role. And she serves in many capacities, certainly throughout the school district. Looking at our facilities overview, I'm going to tag-team this with Mr. Howell, and he certainly can add anything along the way on this as well. When we have a staff, really, when you think of it, in three buildings, eighty-five-plus acres of property, facilities that certainly are in good condition, and that just doesn't happen. That happens certainly because of the hard work and dedication of our maintenance team. And certainly, they're not large in numbers, but they're large when it comes to their work ethic. And they continue with the preventive maintenance programs, checking filters, doing the filters, the preventive maintenance program for the rooftop units that's contracted. We certainly appreciate that, and know that that's invaluable to maintain the current climate conditions throughout our buildings. All buildings in this past summer received a deep cleaning, as you saw. The power washing by hand going through each building, giving it a clean rinse, and we'll probably do next summer for that on a rotating basis, too, as well. This summer, the press box will be cleaned and repainted as well, as we know that that is certainly something that's needed. And lift training just occurred today, right? Yesterday, for all of our staff on the lift. Bleacher replacement is scheduled for the end of August, beginning of September, at which time they'll demo when the new bleacher systems have been ordered. They should arrive. Once they are demoed, the new system at the high school will begin to be installed, while the team then goes down and demos the one at the middle school as well. So we should be having new bleachers arriving and in play for the winter season. We are currently going through requests for proposals for ESCO. That includes several different areas, at which time you, as the board, can line-item those areas, items if you wish, approve one or none, based upon what we receive back from any of those proposals. And it's a lengthy process, and certainly one that I'm learning a lot about as it continues. Incredible recipients of the PA Smart Grant, one of the few school districts, so kudos in the hard work of Mrs. Matisse and her team. The removal will begin for the LGI steps. There's these tiers, and as well as lots of painting to occur throughout this summer. And you probably saw some extension of some fencing, some different areas needed to have an additional fencing around eleven and fifteen. Some gates were also placed at the middle school. They used that front area for physical education classes, and to keep any cars in. Plus, it also serves as a good area for any area that needs to be blocked off or maintained. Those gates can be used. So we're looking to possibly extend those throughout the district to give us the ability to close off sections as needed. Mr. Howell, am I missing anything, or do I do a good job?
I think you did a great job.
All right. Let's give you a round of applause.
(applause)
You owe me lunch.
I was kind of hoping for a facilities report in the form of an interpretive dance, perhaps, from Mr. Howell.
That's what he did also.
Maybe next year.
Next year.
Hey, I have a question, just real quick, about the power washing, the press box. Will the, what are you shaking your head no for?
I think you're asking, yes, I think I'm predicting what you're going to ask.
Okay, well, go ahead.
I think you're asking, is that logo still going to be there on the back of the press box?
Oh, I was wondering if it was just going to get cleaned up a little bit.
It's going to get removed.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's already peeling. It's a decal sticker.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's going to be painted over. We've got some ideas in play to see what the possibilities might be for that. But it'll have a nice, clean look to it, but unfortunately, that decal will probably be switched off.
It just, we actually, I think Phil and I kind of noticed, and we were walking to graduation. And so I thought, oh, when I saw that you were already addressing that, I thought, I wonder what was going to happen with that. But that's good. At least it'll get cleaned up, whatever way it looks.
Thank you.
Very good, though. You did predict. That was good.
Thank you. So we'll transition now into technology and innovation. Thank you, Mr. Howell, for your continued leadership. So a lot of times, people think summer, woo, where they can relax a little bit. There's no relaxation when it comes to maintenance and custodial in the summer. It is full-tilt. You probably see the lockers already being opened, the areas already being cleaned, different parts are already being demoed. And I'll stop talking now and hand it over to Mrs. Matisse.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Yes, for technology and innovation, thank you to the board for approving the iPad refresh for grade seven through twelve. Our teachers in grade seven through twelve did receive their iPad before they left for the summer, and then our AP students and students that will need them over the summer did have the refresh, but we plan to do the rest at the beginning of the school year. We are planning on selling some of the devices, well, the seven through twelve devices, keeping K to six. With your approval at the next board meeting, we're looking, sorry, we're looking to move our student information system to Synergy. Maybe we need to look at our sound system in here. This will be, like we presented earlier, a year-long process, so we'll start in August, September, with the final implementation in July of 2026. Lifted 2025, like Ms. Snyder said, is next week. It's Tuesday, one week away. Last year, we had one hundred, one-hundred-and-eighty participants, is that right? We are up to, right now, two-hundred-and-eighty people attending between attendees, presenters. We have forty students attending between middle school and high school tech team helping. We have student presenters, and we also have a student tech team from Beaver Area School District coming to be part of the keynote and then doing other presentations. So we are super excited about the growth of the conference, plus it was all done with sponsorship, so there's no cost to the district. We were able to receive over thirteen thousand dollars in sponsorship to be able to provide breakfast, lunch to all the attendees. So we're very excited about that. If you're around and want to stop by Tuesday, it's from eight-thirty, seven-thirty to three. We would love to have you stop in and see. Like Dr. Fox said, the PA Smart Grant, we did receive one of the few districts. This is for the Black Hawk Discovery Nest at the elementary school, with the idea that our students at the high school will be coming down and getting hands-on learning experience, teaching students and earning college credits, while our elementary students will have newer or additional STEM experiences at the elementary school. And then some other grants that we did receive through the state and local security grant program, the continuation of the Albert Censor Grant, which we received last year, which monitors traffic. We get notification, and then they also will help us determine how to remedy the problem. Co-Fence Protection, which is a security awareness phishing tool that we can send out fake phishing emails to staff, and then see who's clicking on links, and then they are provided with some additional training. And then new this year is Attenable Grant, which provides that visibility and vulnerability management to protect us from cybersecurity threats. With our staff, we continued the Technology Integration Quarterly Challenges. So basically, teachers had an option to participate. They didn't have to, but they were able to participate and choose, kind of, they picked what they wanted to do. They had, I think, maybe ten, twelve different options, depending on what they chose. They earned different amounts of points. And I'm really excited that we had ninety-four teachers participate this year in the quarterly challenges, which it's awesome to see that it's something extra that they have to do, but they're gaining knowledge and learning how to use that technology in their classroom, which only benefits our students. And part of that, our monthly luncheon learns and innovation coaching sessions from our innovation coaches, so things that our technology innovators are doing to provide the training for our teachers. And like we've already discussed, this year, our Apple Distinguished School at the elementary was a first-year designation, and then the first-year designation for the district as well. And a couple of things I didn't put on here, but for the summer projects, we do have Wi-Fi upgrade at the stadium, and then another big one is our course switch at our middle school, which is out of date. So those are a couple of the projects for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Matisse, and to Mr. Zabel and Mr. Fleischer as well, excuse me, for your continued leadership in the field of technology innovation, and just being a valued member of our entire school district. So everything that you add, thank you very much. All right, we're going to segue now into Mrs. Bressi and the Office of Special Education and Student Services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So I just wanted to highlight a little bit about where we are currently. So our current enrollment in special education is three-hundred-and-thirty-five students. It is twenty-four percent of our population. We're down from about twenty-one-point-nine in the twenty-three, twenty-four child count. And the reason I point that out is because we've really done that based on the hard work of the tiered supports that we've put in at the high school, middle school, and elementary level. I've listed some of them there. So the ability of providing those tiered supports in the general education classroom has enabled us to differentiate and provide our students with the services that they need. At our high school, we do have a hundred and four current special education students. We did graduate twenty-nine, which is excellent, only two of which graduated on IEP goals. So we were actually able to graduate twenty-seven of them through credits, which is, it was a beautiful thing. Middle school, we have a hundred and five, and then currently at the elementary school, we have a hundred and twenty-six. However, there are currently twenty-six early intervention students that are entering kindergarten. We are sitting at twenty gifted students, five in the high school, ten in the middle school, five in the elementary school. Ms. L and I have begun going through the end-of-the-year diagnostics, looking for maybe students that were not identified, but based on their scores, we need to take a better look at. So we've been in the process of doing that. Currently, our 504 population, we're at seventy-five students, twenty-nine in the high school, twenty-seven in the middle school, and nineteen at the elementary. Christine, sorry. So just some of the things that we've done. One of the things that is a highlight for both our middle school and our high school is our Integrated Field Day. I made that L a little big, sorry about that. But I did want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Jacobs, Ms. Laut, and Mr. Snyder, because they do an amazing job of organizing this and putting it together as an opportunity for our special education population to have their own field day. A lot of the students are part of the integrated PE that they get. So this just touched my heart. The other huge shout-out I wanted to do is be to all of our student volunteers, because they do spend the day cheering on giving a huge support. So for those of you that can't see it, that says, "Once upon a time, in a Black Hawk Stadium, a strong, fast, charming boy gave his all at PE Day." His name, he went by the name of Billy. So that was one of the signs that was made to help support our special ed students. So again, this is, I know there was a picture in Mr. Funk's of the Black Hawk Brew. So we've really kind of upped the Black Hawk Brew's game this year. That was a, made it look more like a real coffee shop. So that was a front to the tables that were, that are back there. And Evelyn Dorman, who was one of our graduates this year, did a fantastic job painting that. She did a great job, and we have the front one going in as well. Actually, in addition to that, Mrs. Chrismer was able to purchase, using Black Hawk Brew funds, real aluminum, like, tables. So she wasn't working off the school table. She was actually working off where she could get working off the school table. She was actually working off where she could get everything off the ground. So it's really been, it's been huge. It'll be delayed a little bit in opening next year, for all of you that frequent it on Fridays, because Ms. Chrismer has decided to have a baby on us. That's okay. But when she gets back, she will be reopening it. We also did the Second Annual Perry County Special Olympics. So this is a little bit different. We choose not to go to the Messiah Special Olympics because it is so huge and it can be overwhelming for our students. So we have, this is the second year in a row that we've done one at, it's actually been done at West Perry, and it is just the Perry County schools. And it's just a great opportunity for our kids. They really enjoy it. So the next slide, I think, is just a couple of those pictures. Oh, no, too far. Oh, no, wait a minute. Sorry. Can you go back and grab the new one? I added. Sorry. I'm sorry. It's my fault. There it is. Sorry. I added very quickly. It's my fault. There we go. So there are just some pictures of some of our athletes, no, yeah, that's the field day, and that is some of our athletes participating. And you can see that's a whole big group. And the mascots actually hand out the awards to them. So it's nice. And thank you to the field hockey team for letting us bar there. They're a cover. So this is the elementary school. We do have two new adaptive playgrounds going in, as Dr. Fox talked about. This is the kindergarten playground. It's two different views. So we have requested the funds through access billing to have that put in. As soon as we get verification that we have received those funds, they will start, we will place this order. And they have assured me it can go in this summer, which is huge. So that is it. And then that is the one that will go on the first and third grade playground. It will go actually in between the two existing playgrounds. So that also has minimized the amount of work that we need to do as far as preparation of it is concerned. You'll see each one of them has a ramp that will come off the blacktop for easy access to wheelchairs. I know Mrs. Walburn's very excited. The left, you'll see that slide that she really likes. Yeah, we got it. That you can, you slide down it, and then they can crawl over and climb back up it to go down it again. So just very excited to have them go in. I think they're going to be a huge addition for our special education population. We also had a Tom Buskey Award winner this year. Matthew Rochinsky was nominated by our school to be a Tom Buskey Award winner. You don't necessarily have one every year, but Tom Buskey was someone who worked with the IU and was very important in the transition piece. So he was nominated, and he won the award for our school. So you can see, we all went to celebrate him. We did last year also participate in PICO Transition Night, which was put together by the transition coordinators, Mrs. Flowers and all of the transition coordinators in all four schools. It was on April 23. And what our own Lauren Delelas, well, I guess she's not ours technically, her husband is, but Lauren was our keynote speaker, and she moderated. We brought in partnerships from Hiram Andrews Center, College Pathways to Success, Shields Driving School, as well as, we brought it, well, MHIDD was not able to make it, but ARC was there, as well as OVR, Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, to help give parents an overview as to what they can look forward to in the transition process. We are having it here this year. It is going to be here in the fall. So we will be looking for sponsors. We are picking a date probably within the next week or two. Mrs. Flowers and I are going to sit down with the sports schedule and see, because we don't want to conflict. So we think we're going to be able to get a lot of parents, just because it was at West Perry, which was fantastic. They took the lead on it. But it was far for a lot of our parents to travel. So. And then our behavior specialist, I just wanted to welcome Nicole Redcross, who is our district behavior specialist. And she has been fantastic at helping our elementary school, middle. She hasn't been able to get to the high school as much because of the needs at the other two buildings, but she has been really important in helping go in, support our students, support our teachers, provide them the tools that they need to help students be successful. This is the last thing I just wanted, I just want to highlight this. It's not technically special ed, but it's something that Mr. Funk and I are pretty excited about. Two summers ago now, I think it was, we had the ability to tour what's called the Keystone State Challenge Academy. It was a new facility at that point. And it was basically completely funded by the state. And it is a 100% tuition free residential leadership experience. It is 22 weeks, but then they also get two years of mentorship. It's only available for ages 16 through 18. And they focus on those eight core components. Two of our students have already registered. One is pending orientation. And then the other has the material to apply, and he is looking to apply. If he does not get, start in July, he will hopefully be starting in December. So it's for students who need credit recovery, are just experiencing some hardships in their lives. It gives them the opportunity to sort of turn that around. And they get really cool boots. I got to be honest. They're called cadets. They get, like, the army boots, the army pants. They get to fly on the Black Hawk helicopter. We kind of wanted to go, but that's okay. But yeah, so we're very excited that we have been able to have students take advantage of that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bressi. We appreciate your leadership and the entire Department of Special Education, Student Services. Just to echo that, that Keystone Challenge Academy, kudos to the families and to those students who really took that bold leap and put themselves out there to be able to do exactly what the name says, is challenge themselves. Challenge themselves to continue to grow and to have those experiences. So we're certainly looking forward to hearing about their experiences, to see if it works for other students, and to certainly celebrate their accomplishments as they continue through the program. Going to introduce now, Mr. Jason Brous. Excited to continue the partnership of working with Mr. Brous. He's been an incredible addition to, full-time to the Susquehanna School District, as he's been previously a coach. Now, it was, only took me several visits to the field hockey field to finally recruit him, for him to say yes, and to work day in and day out. And it's been nothing short of awesome. So, thank you.
All right. In an attempt to outdo my coworkers in the district office, I only have 33 accounting slides for you this evening. So buckle up. I'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. All right. So.
Dance?
No, I'm preparing that for next year. I've already started practicing. No videos. So no, number one bullet point here is the most important one in the entire slide. You know, this was a year of transition, and you know, Hannah and Tammy have been with the, you know, district for a little while here. And they've really kept things afloat while there was some, you know, open positions and things like that. They've really welcomed me and, you know, took not only time out of their day-to-day jobs to, you know, help train me and show me the ropes of, you know, Susquehanna. And it wasn't just them. We had a lot of contractors that helped as well, and retired people that came back and helped. And, you know, I appreciate all their help. And everybody internally rolled up their sleeves and really helped us, you know, get through it. But now, as, you know, we transition into, you know, some, I don't know, cleanup or opportunities for improvement, some of the things that we have started working on and are continuing to work on. So we performed an asset management. You've seen Hannah at your policy review meetings. So she's updating some old policies. And, you know, we're cleaning up some software and assets there. New payroll for staff members, combining, going from two payrolls down into one. That'll take effect on July 1. Continued discussions with the CBA and analysis through that period. The fiduciary, I want to thank, you know, all the fiduciary advisors, not just for what they do. They've kind of been left hanging from a financial perspective for a while. So, you know, they've welcomed me, and we've had numerous conversations and, you know, put some things in place starting next year, you know, to help them, you know, manage their finances and, you know, get things cleaned up there. Also, lunch balances, kind of, you know, were an opportunity for, you know, some cleanup there. Hannah's worked really hard with reaching out to people and getting some of those lunch balances cleaned up. They were all both recommendations from, you know, the auditor of opportunities, you know, things that they wanted to see cleaned up. Pre-audit has already started, you know, in those outside areas. Obviously, you know, we can't touch the, you know, the main, you know, general fund too much yet, you know, but we are doing some cleanup of cash. And then these, obviously, fiduciary and cafeteria areas. Hopefully, Ken's working really hard on, you know, putting together a, you know, a, I guess, I don't know, an easier-to-understand reporting package for next year on a monthly basis. Currently, we use just the, you know, reports out of the system, which is good. And, you know, that's what you're used to. But, you know, hopefully, that's something that's a little bit more, you know, insightful, and we can talk specifically about, you know, better variances, you know, between budget and actuals. Yeah. And then record-keeping, you know, retention processes have, you know, been improved. You know, when I walked into my office, I couldn't even see the desks. So I took a quick attempt to, you know, keep what was important and what wasn't. But Kathy has helped us, you know, rearrange a lot of our, you know, record-keeping that has just been, you know, since they've been working so hard and flying by, you know, we're just, you know, kind of thrown everywhere. So she organized it. Ken helped, brought some of his past practices in and, you know, kind of put his stamp on things as well. So things are easily, we are able to find things a lot easier. So, team's working really hard. A lot of improvements to take place for next year. Really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brous, for your continued leadership of the business office. And, you know, as you continue to make those needed changes with the staff and the team. And we sincerely appreciate it. And I too cannot see the top of my desk either. So we're going to go ahead.
Where's the other thirty-two?
They're condensed.
Yeah, yeah. I gave you the cliff note version.
Actually, as he was speaking, we were hitting delete. Yeah, yeah. It's one of those collaborative documents. So we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Markowitz. First year as athletic director here at Susquehanna School District. Lots of things to celebrate and lots of incredible goals that you've already started, you know, in terms of implementation.
Yeah, so I think we had a very successful year with our athletic programs. We're the TVL champions for girls soccer, field hockey, girls track and field, and softball. PICO champions, boys basketball, first time in 20-plus years, cheerleading. District champions was cheerleading in softball. Hopefully, a state championship coming up for softball. It'd be great. Record wins this year. So boys soccer, not only the high school, but the junior high, set records for wins. Boys basketball, high school, junior high, set records for wins. Softball is still undefeated, 22-0 right now. So they're really rolling, which is great. Girls wrestling took off, I think, in a really, really big way. We actually have about 12 girls right now interested coming out next year, so more than doubling our numbers. But the crowds for the girls wrestling was incredible. I mean, it really, a lot of people there, a lot of people supporting the program. The addition of junior high football. So I'm very excited. I've been watching them practice on the turf. There's about 40 of them running around and getting ready for some big-time football. We have a very, very tough schedule, but I think that's good. We want to get them out there against some, some good competition. Winning team records, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball, field hockey, baseball, softball, track, cross-country, competition cheer, all winning records. So very good season there. Wrestling program, we tripled our wins from last year, several district qualifiers. Our track program has been fantastic all year round, several district, state, and even national qualifiers as well. So just some new things. Our facility request form has been working out. Just being able to get those requests and put them in and put them on a calendar. That way, we're all on the same page. It's been great. The travel release form, again, just that liability, just that paper trail. If somebody is leaving a game without taking the bus, we just want to know. We want to have it down. The new coaching matrix proposed, new video board in the stadium. A lot of exciting opportunities. Christina's been awesome, just helping me. I'm not the best with technology, so just having her there as a support has been great. I love hosting events here. So wrestling sectionals will continue, state and district games, PICO for field hockey, boys basketball, track and field, and cross-country. League championships as well for soccer, track and field, boys and girls basketball. Emergency action plans, we are actually, trainer just sent me new ones, revised ones with the practice fields all included, because we added a few practice fields this year, or for next year. So all those emergency action plans have been updated. Impact testing. So I talked to Dr. Fox about this. We are going to up our package, just because we want to make it mandatory for junior high and for high school to take the impact concussion test. This package also comes with a really cool tool, which is called a quick test, where you can give somebody a quick impact concussion test right on the field. They come off, takes five minutes, and you can actually test them for a baseline. So that's something we're going to be implementing next year. Continue to work with the handbook. It's a, it's a working document. So we just want to continue with that. Continue structure, organize. And, you know, I'm big on culture. So I think our culture has, you know, really been strong this year. But we have a lot of work to do, and we want to continue to improve. Just a picture here was National Signing Day. We had a lot of athletes signing to play, or to participate in athletics at the next level, which is extremely hard to do. Only 7% PA athletes play at the next level. So that was fantastic. It was a great night. Good turnout. So again, you know, just still winding down with softball. Hopefully, you know, three more wins and we'll be state champs. So we're going to continue to work there and continue to support the outstanding program. So overall, very good year. Very good year for us.
Thank you, Mr. Markowitz. And thanks for your continued leadership. Absolutely. One game at a time. We know that, certainly, as we're excited for our student athletes. Excited, certainly, for the energy that you bring and all of what you do to be a part, certainly, of our school district. So thank you. And thank you to Mrs. Frye as well. Mrs. Frye has been an incredible, Dawn has been an incredible addition to our school district. So thank you for your support on that, from her game managing to her emergency operations plan and communication with families, communication with staff. She's done a tremendous job. And we see her at everything. So it's, she's been an incredible addition. All right. Just to kind of wrap things up, we have a little video for you. It should do a really nice job of linking together our, our school district. And then I'll, I'll be available for the next hour for questions. And that summarizes our annual report. Thank you. Any questions on anything as we conclude? See if there's any public comment at this time? And I will check real quick, see if there's any public comment online. There is?
Yeah.
I'll see if I can get to it real quick. Public comment from Richard Mullen, Penn Township. It says, "General public comment. Hello, I'd like to make a suggestion to the topic of event ticket prices. I feel strongly that the event price should be free for students schoolwide, regardless of grade. As an example, there are students that are in the middle school that are playing junior high football. They are encouraged to attend and support all sporting events. School spirit within the student population shouldn't have a price. Younger siblings to an athlete within the school district should be there to support or attend free admission. Family members that attend, not as students, should be charged." Family members that attend, not a student, should be charged the ticket price." Certainly, we, we appreciate that public comment and it's something that we take a look at as well. And I think there are certain nights that athletes will be a part of those in particular, where there are youth nights that are encouraged, where athletes come in and participate. But I believe there will be an opportunity, I'm sure, for junior high programs to also be there with their jerseys, and it's something we can certainly talk about.
I would be curious to know, I, I feel the same, actually. I would be curious to know what revenue we think we're going to get by charging elementary and middle school students to attend our, I mean, not now, but to attend our events, because...
Well, I, I believe there's, there's a couple of things. An elementary and middle school student need to attend, they cannot attend event without a parent, first and foremost, and that will continue. But secondly, I believe in the, from the previous years, they have been charged, if I'm accurate in saying that. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, I don't think this is typically a new practice. Maybe what we can look at is, we could have a conversation about the scaling, bless you, of the particular ticket price, if we believe $5 is too much for our students. Or it would, it would be difficult to discern between a way student and our students. Typically, it's not necessarily about the revenue as much as it is to offset some of the rising costs associated with putting on a sporting event. We're not balancing an event by, by generating ticket prices.
No, I, I also, I just agree with the comment, I was thinking it earlier, I'm glad someone brought it up. Yeah, I see no, I don't see anything positive in charging our elementary and middle school children to come to a high school event. We want them to come to high school events. We, we want them to engage in our community, to our school, and we want them to bring a parent along or whatever. But just my, my thought, I did not, I don't think I realized, I did not know we were charging them. It just doesn't, I echo the thought, it doesn't make sense to me that we do.
Can I maybe, just a suggestion, Mr. Markowitz, about the season pass? Maybe if we did the family pass, would it be just, would it be appropriate just to call it a family pass and not be two adults plus one? Like, I'm wondering how much logistically that's going to be a hassle to figure out. That's my first thought. And then my other one was, I think when we used to do them before, we had single season passes. So, like, if you had one single grandparent could buy a single pass, so like, maybe for $75. So, if a family pass is $150, then it allows a grandparent to be able to just buy one for one person, where there may not be two people or two adults on the pass. So, just, just a thought.
And I think we did make it so, so our senior community members can, can still get in for free.
Oh, do they come for free?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that like for seniors though?
Correct.
Like, yeah, for like over 65?
Correct.
I mean, there'd be plenty of grandparents that don't meet that criteria. That, that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Not me, because I'm an old mom and I don't plan on being a grandparent until I'm after 65. But I've got friends.
Absolutely. So, I think this is the time to revisit that, because we need to come back June 17th. This is our last kind of public meeting before that. So, what direction do you guys collectively want us to put on for ticket prices? Because that's where we need to go.
I would also comment, if, if this is to offset rising costs or whatever, we are now raising the price of tickets considerably over what they were before, which should also raise the cost. So, if there's a time to change this practice of charging elementary and middle school students, I think it would be now. But I'm all in favor of not charging elementary and middle school students. I don't know what the rest, you need direction from the whole board.
We do.
For, for the purposes of next week, though, do we need to decide whether or not Sesquenita students are going to be free? Or do you need to just know, if we are charging, will it be $5? Is that what you...
Well, I think you set the ticket prices. So, before that, it will be mid-August, well, August, and some fall events will already be...
No, I guess what I'm asking is, is the only thing we have to do a motion on is for the actual price of a ticket, not whether we're going to offer some, a student free admission. But if we were going to charge a student, it would be $5. Is that what you need to know? It sounds to me like the only thing that we have to vote on is the actual price of a ticket, should we be charging somebody admission to come in? Is that right?
Yes, you'll set the, you'll set the ticket prices.
Right.
For, and the, and the ticket prices for a family pass and what a family pass designates. So, I guess the question is, are we charging for student prices? We will, we will. But are we charging our own elementary and middle school students? And then the question then is, yes, we, we're pretty good at identifying who our kids are, but how do we know who is our, without identification?
I would say if we are going to let K through 12 students in, they happen to have a Sesquenita pass. Otherwise, if the people tracking tickets don't know all the students, other schools are just saying, "We're a student, we're a Sesquenita student," get a free pass. Pass would have to be required.
And they don't get, they still get like a little, when they get their pictures taken, they don't have an ID?
Well, the timeframe of the picture, pictures, back. We can make up Sesquenita student athletic passes, kids require. They would have to show.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, but I think we're not, we're not charging a different price for a student or an adult. It's $5, right, across the board.
Is there a reason you want to postpone us making this decision?
No, I'm just saying, if, if, if we have to decide right now whether we're going to have it free from K through 12 or just 7 through 12, that, it sounded to me like the only thing we really need to vote on is how much we're going to charge somebody if we're charging them.
No, I think they want us to vote on the whole thing.
They just want direction. If Jonathan Frye were here, I would, I would pick on him right now, because the way, if we were to leave it that you charge the elementary and middle school, then he could bring his high school son and his wife and one of their children for free, but he would have to either leave the other two children home or pay $10. And I just think that's ridiculous.
Well, I think in Jonathan's case, he should probably have to pay 20.
If, you mean if he bought the family pass?
If he brought the family, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I gave my opinion, we need to hear from other board members, please.
I'm in favor of allowing all the kids from the school to go to the games for free.
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well. So, you started a trend, you started a trend, you have started a trend here. Yes, yes.
I also want to say to the community, thank you to at least one gentleman who's listening and did send in a comment, it makes a difference, it really does.
Yeah, I was going to say that as well.
Scott, if we, if that, if we go with the students are free, does the, does that affect what you would consider would be the family pass cost? Because I'm, I'm thinking it's 15? It's 15 ga, is it like 15 games to get the cost?
For the whole year, yeah, 15.
For them to be able to get the cost of that back.
Correct.
If it's just two adults.
I'm, listen, I'm totally okay with, obviously, not charging our students. There's some things, you know, we got to make sure that the kids bring a pass, I think that's important. But with the parents coming with them, I think that's, that's a responsibility that can be put on them as well. So, I have no problem with that, it's just, we did the all-sports pass for the high school. They'd hand them out as a freshman, the ELA teachers would hand them out, and the high school kids would get it. From, to my knowledge, we've always charged the middle school and the elementary. But I do see the point, I think, you know, if we, I have no problem getting all students in for free. It's just having that pass, like Mr. Funk said, like, having that to show the ticket takers, because some nights, we have 150, 200, 300 people coming in, we got to have that, so.
Along with, as long as they have the pass and little kids, would they lose a pass? Well, they have to come with a parent anyway, so the parent will be responsible for their athletic pass. So, because you can't just drop students off.
Do you want any more feedback, or? No, I mean, I'm saying, do you need more of a...
All right, Kelly Nos, Penn Township. I was thinking the same thing along with the online comment about all students. And I know like the, Mr. Funk was saying about the pictures. Well, a lot of the kids are returning kids, so using, you know, their last year, you know, yearbook picture, which we already have, you know, the only thing would be then kindergarten, you know, and, you know, go take. Okay. I'm saying if there would have been, like, you know what I mean? You know, if you want to sign a picture on the pass, you know, last year's yearbook, the only thing would be kindergarten, but then, you know, just take their picture. But also, like, discussion was like for basketball, having the JV games at the high school as well. You know, that'd be something, you know, be like, oh, you want to stay for, you know, high school, now you have to go to the entrance and pay to be able to come back in when you're already here playing. So, that was my thought. You know, it's like, oh, you want to stay for additional games, see what's the next level. But now we're saying, now you have to pay for the rest of your experience here.
So, I think my question goes back to their school-issued ID. They, they don't get that issued every year, they get one?
No, we get it every year.
I just asked my kid, and we don't get, he hasn't gotten a new one, we only have...
High school, they get a new ID every year.
Okay, well, at the middle school and elementary school level, we get one.
And these wouldn't be, we wouldn't use the school ID, because by the time we have the spring, the fall pictures, you have to make just a regular athletic student's just, valid picture.
So, why couldn't they use their ID from the previous year?
But everyone's got a cap, so we're either doing it the same for everybody or...
So, I think really the only thing you're talking about is your freshmen aren't going to have one, they're not going to have a high school-issued one. So, your upperclassmen could use their one from the prior year until they get their new one, because it's still going to be one. Your incoming freshman class aren't going to have one quote-unquote issued from the high school, but they are going to have one coming with them unless they're a student that's totally new to the district. But yet they still would have one, because the district issues an ID at some point. So, we don't have to go through the cost of making a pass when we already have something that we make an issue that we really don't use for anything other than it hangs on the side of people's refrigerators that we could be using.
And I do think it does prevent kids handing them off to their friends that, that could just come in and not pay, that don't go to the school.
Well, all, all of those things will happen, and again, it's one of those deals where it is, we're trying to encourage students to come, so either student ID or your athletic ID to come in. We'll make it as easy as possible, let's, let's get them in, let's get it going, let's get the kids to support each other. Parents still need to bring them. If they don't have either of those and they're dressed in their Sesquenita attire, they're getting in with a paying adult. So, come on in, let's pack the stadium, let's support our Blackhawks, and use those, those $5 at the concessions to support our sports boosters.
Amen.
Yeah, just going to say, amen.
I'm, I'm still just wondering whether the, the pass price is going to be attractive, if it's only going to be now, really for two adults. Like, do you think? I don't know, I'm just thinking... Yeah, I mean, it's...
Track, softball.
Yeah. And it would cover junior high now too, middle school things? Yeah, all right, maybe, maybe it would then. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I would just, I would just, you know, I think, the more I think about it, the more I like the idea of offering a single person's pass too, just for half the price. You know, because I do think you might end up selling those. Or even for single parents.
We could certainly work on that, so here's what I'm, what I'm hearing, just to recap all the events from, from this evening. We're going to approve, a motion to approve for the June, the Orlando trip for our high school choir to allow them to begin that preparation needed to begin. That's an overnight trip to the Orlando Resort. We're looking to, a motion to approve the revised coaches' matrix. We're looking for a motion to approve ticket prices for the '25-'26 school year with our students, K to 12 being free, senior citizens free, $5 for all non SSD students, and $5 for all adults. We're looking for a family pass that is two adults plus one guest, as well as a single pass that can be devised as a reasonable number that we will, we will create.
No, the family pass won't be a plus-one. I don't think so, I don't see why it would.
That was a plus-one student, but now students can be free, so there's not, not plus another adult, that'd be three adults.
All right, so just two student, two adults.
Adults.
Okay.
Yeah. Or $75 for a single. Oh, oh, just do two sep, just do a single pass for $75, no family pass. Yeah, that's probably better.
Recapping. But this is important, because here we go, and a lot of things are going to happen between now and June 17th. Our meeting is not next Tuesday, but the following June 17th. $5 for an adult, $5 for a non SSD student. K to 12 students are free, showing an ID or your athletic pass or some type of Sesquenita garb being worn with a, with a paying adult that's going to be with you for supervision anyway.
Apologize, but I think we're just going to say they have to show an ID.
That's fine.
If, if we decide we know them, because they have a garb, but we're not going to say you can in free if you're wearing a Sesquenita shirt. Right?
Can you have a pass?
All right, let me go through this one more time for the fifth time. Ticket prices, $5. $5 for a non SSD student. K to 12 with an athletic pass or your student identification. Single pass, $75 per person.
Yes.
Okay. And then the last is the motion to approve KPN project for the roofing, not to exceed the number that was discussed this evening.
Yes.
Anything final, any other outstanding public comments, virtually? All right, caucus...